You are watching Access the Port County Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 17th meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesses the port county dot org.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming to the October meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. We will move on to approval of the minutes. Has everyone on the council had a chance to review the minutes from last month's meeting?
Yes ma'am.
Yes, yes.
This is great.
Was Sharon okay this evening? You see she's not.
No, she's not feeling well. She will not be.
Sorry for that. Okay. And if everyone has had a chance to review the minutes, do we have any questions, comments, or corrections? Counsel? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the September meeting?
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes for the September meeting as presented.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the fund report. Question, is there anything that stood out on the fund report from last month?
None, no.
Okay. And counsel, any comments or questions on the fund report that you noticed or had?
Nothing for me, I'm good.
Hearing no comments, I think there's a guy.
Right, I did my.
Hearing no comments or questions, do we have a motion to approve the fund report as presented?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Actually, the motion carries, but, and payment of the bills.
I didn't get a chance to look at this one.
Okay, so we'll take a moment to review that one more time.
Look at the, look at the whole thing. No.
Look at his son.
Okay, oh, okay, yeah, 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 right. Yep, yep.
Because if you remember, it's what we.
Yep, I do remember now.
Where you pointed his son.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve payment of bills?
I'll move to approve payment of bills as presented.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
One, two, three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, do we have any correspondence this month? Okay. Moving on to reports. MS4, I know we received the audit back from Nicole. Is there a report sent to anyone else other than, do you have anything for us?
I don't.
Nicole? And the street department didn't send you anything?
No.
Okay, I know Nicole's going through the audits to finalize everything. I would imagine that we'll have something more next month on that. Mr. Willoughby, how are you this evening?
I'm good.
Good.
I do not have any updates other than we're rolling along and with the big submissions.
Okay.
And opening again in the month.
Anything more on the properties on Harding?
I received, I received a communication from one owner that is the representative, their little owner.
Okay.
Some kind of discussion. I informed them that their title had been transferred. I do have a copy of the deed for whatever reason it's not recorded. They have been, it's pretty much status quo, so.
Okay.
Honestly, it's, well, you're gonna start citing those properties and give us the basis to move forward. I've sent the letters, nobody else has responded. The one that is owned, that has the property boundary issue, I told him it's a civil matter and they, they in fact, it sounds like they plan on trying to do some kind of partition action or something to get it off center. So, that part, but I haven't seen anything. I was also gonna receive an email from them indicating, and I haven't received anything from them.
If, as we move forward, what would be the next step?
Thank you.
I believe that we should write some citations.
And then?
And then from there, we can, I mean, it depends on the nature of things that need to be done. You know, if we need to cut weeds and clean, those are things we could do that are costing the town and leaning, those haven't been real effective in the past. We can collect those, you know, that's small claims, so it's not a big endeavor, but any money you have to spend on that is pain, but we'd seek to recoup anything. You could move forward with trying the demolition route, which is a procedure, you know, obviously going through, but I would say that we should start with citations.
Okay.
And cite everything that's applicable, and I can help Chief or Steve or between the three of us.
I think Warren and I have been here the longest. I know those properties have been an issue since before I served on the council.
Yeah.
I'm quite tired of sitting up and down there, so I think it needs, the citations at a minimum need to be done, and we need to move forward.
Sure, and then I'll prepare, just lay out the procedure for you for, if you decide you want to take the demolition action, I can prepare.
Do you need a motion to start to move forward with that?
Would that, are you saying then ultimately Trail Creek would own those houses?
No.
If we demo?
No, what you do is you have a lien on them that we'll take, you know, and that's assuming there aren't mortgages. You have to give everybody, anybody with substantial stake or interest in the properties, so owning them, no, only if you move to foreclosed, you know, you're gonna get a judgment, you'll have a lien on the property, so it just depends on the rules that we go.
Gotcha.
Owning by definition, no, could you ultimate because of the value and depending on how we go about the collection actually, yes, but that's not likely. Someone will step up with us.
I actually.
Not the owners, for sure.
I actually would like to move towards demolition with properties. With not only the one close to Michigan Boulevard, but the other one as well.
Yeah, I don't even know, are they habitable if all the taxes are paid?
That's exactly it.
I think that probably both of those matter, so I can summarize so we're in a position to move forward and give you an idea of the expense that you'll have, because we're gonna have to get somebody to give bids for them or I didn't go through that process.
Correct.
But in the meantime, and I don't know what you've done in the past with those of the involvement of the building commissioner as well, if I'm looking at, might be under his purview.
Yeah, the, because the house that's, I forget the address, the one at the very end, the White House, this ranch, the roof is gone, the ceiling has collapsed.
They're definitely not habitable.
It stinks. And I'm surprised the neighbors.
There's an odor from the outside of the home.
Yeah.
I thought we had actually, like, set aside money at one point for demolition of those houses, like, in like 2019, 2020, somewhere around there.
This was prior to Bill Herbach's retirement.
Correct.
This was in 2018, 2019.
I think it was 2019, because I was on the.
And then the ownership changed.
Right.
Somehow the ownership changed and then we had to start over again.
Yep.
Because the statute of limitations had run out.
Yes, that's what happened.
And demolition is estimated about 10 grand.
Yes, per home.
I was, I want to say we had budgeted like 40,000.
I don't recall that amount.
I have to go back through my notes, but.
However, we do have to start over.
Yeah.
From the very beginning, so if you could start, do you need a motion to start that process?
If you want to start that process, sure, then I can give you somewhere.
Okay.
Let this get that moving forward before next.
Thank you.
As well as moving forward to.
Thank you. So yes, you need a motion. If someone could make that motion to allow Mr. Willoughby to.
I'll make a motion.
The motion to allow Mr. Willoughby to begin the process.
Start beginning the process from citations.
And summary?
Aye.
Did you want to finish that motion?
No, I'm good.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're gonna start with citations first?
Yep.
Who will that continue to have a summary of?
The demo process.
Thank you.
Is that a time issue with citation, you gotta wait for so many days or?
No, well, shouldn't that can, I'll be related, but that should be out there too.
Okay. Do you have anything else for us this evening or?
That's it.
Thank you.
I think, I do see a whole business that concerns, I, I.
Golf carts?
Yeah, I owe Warren a, just a sample, one template, so I think that's why I brought that up, something else developed and that was a carryover, but I don't have any update on that, it was just in advance of next year at some point, so we could look at what some other communities are doing.
Okay.
Is there a green plaza up for sale?
I don't know.
Haven't heard anything? I've heard a rumor that it's gonna be up for sale.
The license bureau and the building that Nelson was in was sold this year to the person that owns that plaza where Alex medical is over there, Franklin and Coolsbury.
Oh, okay.
So that, that sale is already paid in place, but the rest of the downed plaza now is still back the core.
Okay, good to know. Moving on to our engineer.
We have update on the community crossings, matching grant for this year and for next year, and Sam Oza, who's the professional engineer for the project and also the project manager is going to speak to that.
Hi, Sam.
Hi, good evening all. I'm Sam Oza, as an associate, and the construction is completed right now for the 2023 dash one CCNG, and we have just a couple of items that the contractor is working on, punch these items, so hopefully before the end of the week, it should be, the mouse should be completed, should have completed, punched these items, so we'll transition to closing with town and indoor, so that's the starters of the project.
Will they be removing the signage also then at that point?
Yes, it's, I talked about that, I discussed that with the contractor yesterday.
Okay.
It's, some of the signages, it was intentionally left in place because of the punchist.
Okay.
So they didn't want to take it out and bring it back because.
Understood.
Yeah.
Understood, okay.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah, so that's all for the CCNG. Then again, notify me of the council's approval for the amp recertification that would enable the town to apply for CCNG for next year, so I would like to maybe go through that maybe after the, fix a meeting to go through to know the budget and what we need to be looking out for for next year.
So you're looking for dollar amounts that we have for next year?
Dollar amounts.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can absolutely get those figures to you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your work. Anything else for you, counsel?
Nothing else for me.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, Amanda, I see you're here for the park department tonight.
Yeah, so we have our fall festival this, this, oh, I've seen.
We'll have you stand up tonight.
I was gonna go with that. Okay, so we've had an exciting day today. So we have the fall festivals coming up on Saturday, this upcoming Saturday, the 21st, from 1 to 5, and so we thought we had this all figured out and we are getting there, so the problem is that we keep having upcoming expenses, like incoming expenses that we weren't exactly sure of, but we're still working on that. So, we have 35 vendors, which is a pretty big deal, I think, and we still have, I've been inundated with five more today, but I think that we're stopping at 35. It's getting to the point where I can't control it and I only have so many volunteers, which are pretty much just our husbands that we have forced to join us, so, for manual slave labor. So, I was gonna say, we have, our expenses right now are right about 863, but that is without two things that we desperately need, because as my understanding is that the parks, the bathrooms in Nelson Park are winterized and need updating, so those are not usable, and we have about 863 people who are interested in this event, and so with just 35 vendors and us running around, I'm kind of running into the problem of what are we gonna use for restrooms, because peeing in the parks is frowned upon. And so, right now, one porta potty is gonna cost me $253, and that's not even including, I have two cokes out, but that's not including, like, one of them, they have to be there for a whole week, I guess, pretty much, and one of them I have, where it's like $253 for just a standard porta potty, but it's like 300 for an ADA porta potty, which we probably were gonna need both, and so it's gonna just, it's another $500 that we were not expecting onto our budget for that, but we do have a bouncy house, we do have some crafts, we have our pumpkins coming in, so we're expecting a full day, a full day of activities, and then the other problem that we're running into is our generators. There's only so much electricity along the side of Nelson Park, so there is a good chance that I was told that our generator that we have for the town is not for our, we can't, we can't use it?
Overkill.
That's what we have, what do you have, overkill, like?
Yeah, it's just too big.
It's like too big?
Yeah.
Or like I can't have a rock concert there, like too big? Okay, so the problem is, is that we're looking at having to possibly rent one from cable, cablets?
Mm-hmm.
So, I was gonna say, we have two cokes out for that, one is $80 for like a 6 kilowatt, if I'm understanding that correctly, which I was made up to understand would be more than enough.
A generator you can borrow.
See, we literally sat all day together at my house catching my food, you could've probably.
You literally didn't tell me, I didn't.
All right, so I guess Steve is offering our friendly police opportunity here, Steve is, we're good.
You're good.
We're good, so just porta potties, but I think we, we're gonna find money in the budget with the rights actually, we're gonna find money in the budget.
If the council's okay?
If the council's okay with that, because I'm gonna need $500, because I don't have any other options as far as restrooms.
So, can we have a motion from the council to approve $500?
I'd move to approve $500 for porta potties for the fall festival.
Thank you.
This weekend.
Have a comment?
I'm sorry, we have a comment?
Comment. If they're there for a week, it would be great, because we would like to have for Halloween also, because that's always been a problem.
So, would the police department like to allow for?
So I just told Josh.
Partial budget?
We'll do half.
Okay, so if we can pay for.
I will amend my motion to have the police department and the park department split the costs for the, of the $500 for the porta potties for the week.
A second?
So they just need to be there for the 29th as well?
They need to be there for the 29th, and they said that they'll, it's like a, well, it's a, they include hand sanitizer and trailer.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Before, I would like the second, but I do have one question before, before I second. What, what would the cost differential be to unwinterize the public restrooms and then re-rent-winterize them compared to the porta potty?
The problem isn't just the winterizing, the problem is those bathrooms have sat idle for many years. I think for 16 years.
That's not.
So we don't know the status of the tank, the field, the lines.
Okay, I, I was under the impression that they were.
Fine, but we don't know.
I was told they were totally unusable.
Okay, I was under the impression that they were.
Yeah.
Working throughout the year and they were just to winterize.
We never used them.
Okay, very good. Then I second that motion.
Thank you, all in.
That leads into our new swing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We're putting a new swing set there as well. So, we finally got that all squared away, the grand total of the new swing set, in case anybody's interested in one for their yard, is $11,595. And that does not include removal of people's.
So you're in the process of raising funds for that?
We are, we found money.
So you have a grant for this?
It's the rest of the park budget for the year, basically.
Wow, okay.
And it was, we had, we had allowed 8,500, but with the size and the, and the, and just the wood, the wood that you need, the chip that you need, just to make it all within ADA regulations, was the extra money that we had not expected, so.
Okay.
We are done for the year and we will not be able, we are not, we haven't mapped out as far as where it's going to be in Nelson Park, but at this point in time, we cannot remove the old set until next year, because that's just gonna have to go in our budget for next year.
That was 11,995, right?
11,595.
Five.
Great total, but it is purchased, it is, it's gonna be beautiful.
And that's with installation?
That is with installation, yes, that is all together, that is everything, he's bringing it, he's installing it, it's gonna be beautiful, we have it mapped out, so what we're doing is we'll be extending the borders of where the playground is, and we have, we have schematic that I did not bring, because it's with Katrina, but it's where, if you can think about where Nelson Park is, where the concession stand is pretty much, and that whole swing is there. There, the one where the swing, where the, where the slide is, where the wood chips and everything are, we're gonna actually just be moving the wooden borders of that and extending that out. I was gonna say, we all went out and measured it, because we knew we had to be within a certain range of the electricity and things like that, so we mapped that out, we're all good there.
So, one thing I would maybe like to see in the future is to get community involvement when we do these projects like this with the swing sets and that type of stuff, especially for the tear down and installation. I know that I've been involved in, in, in projects like that in the past, and I think if we were to get the community involved, you get a lot of buy-in in that and a lot of ownership.
Okay.
So I would like to see that going forward to save us some money too.
Yeah, and that was, what we're doing is for, also with the fall festival, is like a silent auction, because of my understanding, we can't, we can't raise money by asking for, like, money, money, but we're doing a silent auction, so each vendor will be doing a raffle or a basket, some aren't donating just because they want to, but what we're doing is we have a silent auction, and that's a way to kind of help us in, like, cover the costs and go back into our budget.
Community involvement though, I mean, actually purchasing the equipment?
Uh-huh.
Having the community actually install it and, and tear down the old equipment.
The only issue with that is you have to have that installed, or you have some of it forsaken liability.
We don't.
We did it at Queens.
This is different than Queens.
I don't think it is, because we, we were, actually, we did it over at Gardena Park too.
True.
And that was the Michigan City Parks Department.
That's something that I'm interested in, I did not know that we were allowed, I was told because of safety issues that we had to be careful, but if we can get a whole group to turn down that old swing set, I have.
We have to have the people there from Playtime or whatever.
Right, yeah.
They would actually, they would have to oversee it to make sure it was installed properly, but that's how you get around that.
And Greg from Play Stuff, Kids Stuff Play Systems, who we're using out of Gary, he's been awesome to work with, so I don't think.
That's who we used.
I was saying, I think that he's going to be a big help going forward with moving, because they're, they're saying the slide needs to be replaced in the next five years, things like that, but it's just working, I want to get those concessions and things like that, just like kind of taken care of, so we can rent out the fields and stuff again. So that's kind of what we have upcoming for the, for the upcoming year, but we do have a schematic that we are putting out at the fall festival that shows the new park as soon as you walk in, so people can see it and see what we're doing with that, and then something else we had looked at, we're updating, we're getting the signs finally put up in Ali's Park Park, so that's finally done, and we put the no digging, no smoking, no liquor signs up there, and then we're gonna put a mailbox for the registration, so that way people can stop coming to town home, because I don't think a lot of people know that you do have to sign up for the park to get your dogs in there, so these are some of the things that we're looking for, that we'll be talking to the community too when we're out there, because we have special shirts that say, hey, we're park board members, and hopefully I'll see all y'all out there too.
Has anyone contacted Mr. Pritz yet to let him know we're putting up the new signs? He, he wants to do a grand reopening of the park?
No, but I would love this contact information.
So if we can.
I was gonna say, I'm going to need to meet with Dave tomorrow at 1:00, to kind of walk the park to see where we're putting those, so I was gonna say, I would love to, if I need this contact information, I will definitely make sure to reach out, we have a meeting tomorrow.
We'll make sure to get that to you.
Okay.
I'm sure he was gonna be here this weekend, but.
Yeah, I, just a comment on, keep in mind, on ADA, we had a study done for both parks, and one thing, when you're laying things out, keep in mind that the long-term goal would be somehow to make sure we can connect, I'll just say, connect the play equipment, baseball diamond, whatever, if there's thoughts about the concession stand, but it has to be connected somehow with a paved walkway. And that paved walkway has to come from a parking spots that will, I'll just say, right now, there would be probably, if we did it today, there would have to be handicap parking on Edgemore, like, 3 or 4, and the same for Whipperwell.
Okay.
And then from that point, that'd probably be paved, and then there'd be a walkway connected to that, so someone just, imagine with a wheelchair, you know, and then they gotta be able to get to your swings and everything.
We are running into issues with that, even with the dog park, that interest of the dog park, we actually have one of our members, Jim, my vice president, fall out of his chair there because of the mulch issue compared, but we put a slab in there that we need, it's like an additional $8,000.
Oh, yeah.
I reached out to a friend to see if he's willing to donate any of his time or any of his resources to help us kind of get that paved, so that's something, again, that's on for our next year. We do have the ADA report that you guys did do that study that we did, that is something that we have looked at to make sure that we are on track going forward with the equipment and things like that, but, yeah, these things, you know, run up money.
Yep, that's all, just money.
Yeah, yeah, just money, but that's all I have for now, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the festival this weekend.
Yes.
Thank you, yes.
It's gonna be fantastic. I don't see our building inspector, did he send a report by chance?
No, we didn't.
Nothing for planning is on.
Nothing for planning is on, so moving on to the police department.
Good evening, I won't be as long as Amanda was. Two quick things, the radar signs that I talked about last month have shipped, they shipped last Friday, the street department was out, Dave and I went out and marked some spots, got the locates done, and with leaf season coming up, he's not sure how much time he will have to devote to getting them up, so what they did was they went out and hit the bases in, so all four bases are in, they got the concrete too, and then the piece that goes in the ground, so when the signs do come in, even if it's cold and wintery, all it is is a matter of sticking the sign in and bolting it in.
Fantastic.
And assembling it to the, to the post, so that's been done. There's one in the southbound 300 block just north of Whipperwell, one in the southbound block, just, it'd be the 400 block just south of the gas station, I think it's the second or third house down. Northbound, it's just south of Firefly, in that first yard on the corner, and then the other northbound one is in the 300 block in Josh Lane's front yard, right before Pillars Pond, the, the pond there. So, and we're kind of limited, because it has to be where there's sunlight.
Is that the 200 block?
It is.
What did I say, 300?
Yeah.
300, 200, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, 200.
Yeah, my apologies. So hopefully we'll get those soon, and Dave's ready to go as soon as they come in, as long as they're not on leaf season.
Okay.
The other thing is, don't forget trick or treat, we're kind of holding off to see what the weather's like, because if it's gonna be wet and sloppy, we're not gonna do the trunk or treat, so that's kind of gonna be a late start on that, but it'll still be available for those that want to do it, as long as we're not looking at rain and we still have decent ground, because I don't want to rot out the park.
Okay.
Other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Marshall.
Guys, have any for me?
Keep up the good work.
Appreciate it, thanks for your support.
Always.
Thank you.
I do know that leaf season is coming up, and there was an announcement that Josh Lane, I believe you posted from the street department on Facebook.
Yes, indeed.
So do you have the dates again, too, Hans?
October twenty-third through December eighth.
October twenty-third through December eighth.
When's the pickup? Last day of lawn refuse.
The first Monday in November.
So, looking at, at the dates for that.
Leaves the sixth.
That is November sixth. So leaf pickup starts then Monday, next Monday.
Yep.
And just for the residents who are watching out there, no sticks or other debris, just only leaves in those leaves piles, otherwise they will tag the houses and, and not pick up leaves. Um, moving on, um, I also know, before I move on to the street department, Warren, you had, had talked about a tree.
Mm-hmm.
That you had seen at Day and Harding, that I know was, was rather small, I know that, um, Mr. Baker did get back to you on that, I know they're a little bit busy right now, so is he getting bids for that tree, or?
Uh, I didn't, and that was my, maybe the follow-up question, do we, that was, you know, do we, can we do it?
He'll take care of that, if, I know he won't take, have time to take it down themselves, but he can get bids to see how much it is to take down, if we have money in the budget, then we can.
If we have, yeah, what it's, what I said.
If we have money in the budget.
Do we have money in the budget?
May, may I just interject our conversation?
Please.
It was about that tree. Um, with leaf pickup initially, his leaf pickup is probably gonna be a spin through the town when they're done, because there's not gonna be that many.
Alright, okay.
But he had talked about taking that one down themselves.
Okay.
And that was, that was yesterday, we talked about it.
Okay, so hopefully they'll get to that one before it gets too hot and heavy with leaf season.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, that tree's not that big.
I, I think I've got to look at it.
It's, it's not a huge tree.
I'm just afraid of branches or stuff to be coming down.
Yeah, there's a car that's parked across the street, if it were to fall a certain way, it would definitely hit that car.
Yep.
So hopefully they can get to that one themselves.
Okay, do, they know that, that officially?
If Steve and, and.
He, he knows about it, he knows that he's come down.
Okay.
I won't be here the next two days, I.
Right, well, I just.
I'll talk to him tomorrow.
Thank you.
And, and follow up for sure. And just to get the official.
And while we're on the street department, did you ever get an opportunity to talk to him about the swap? For Menke and Johnson?
I don't believe that will happen, I actually drove that.
Okay.
Menke and Johnson, and Menke towards, after that curve.
Right, it's all gravel.
Is all gravel.
Right.
And I don't want that to tear up our plows.
Okay.
Um, we had the, the LaPorte County Commissioners approach us and asked if we wanted to do a swap of the LaPorte County Plows, Plow and Johnson Road for us, in exchange for us doing all of Menke Road, which in theory sounds great, however, Menke Road, after it turns around that curve, is technically Michigan City's property, not ours, nor is it the county's. So it technically is not a, a benefit to us, number one, number two, would tear up our plows with all of the gravel that is sitting out there. So we're gonna plow Johnson Road anyway, because we wanna make sure it's done, number one, number two, that would really do a lot of damage to our plow. So I don't, I don't feel that it would be a benefit to us either way, because we're still going to plow.
Okay, agree.
So why tear up our plows?
Oh, yeah.
Spend the extra money, it, it doesn't benefit us. Um, so moving on from the street department, anything more for ADA?
No, nothing on ADA, but, you know, the, uh, signs, I just, uh, sent Steve there.
Okay, we're gonna come back to that in old business.
Oh, okay.
So we'll come back to that in a little bit. Anything for Nurbzeh this evening? Okay, thank you. Okay, under old business, you said for golf carts, you will get us the sample ordinances next month, correct?
Yes. Question?
Yes.
What are we doing?
There's nothing formal, it was just for you to look, uh, yeah, it was following up previous conversations to see if you were inclined to do anything with regard, but giving you an idea of what other communities are allowing.
We have, there's been a couple of golf carts going past my house, and, like, one's got headlights and everything, like, oh, that's pretty cool, and the other one doesn't have a, like, wow.
So we'll look forward to seeing those, those sample ordinances over the next month, if you would. Um, moving on to student design for town entry signs.
Oh, now.
Yeah.
Okay, well, they, uh, sent me, uh, the first draft, and, uh, that was today, and then I just forwarded it to Steve, and it's a first draft, so there's nothing to, uh, really show yet.
Okay, so it needs a little reworking?
Need some tweaking.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I can send it to you guys, but it, uh, it's not ready.
It needs, it needs a little work, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's about twelve of them, I think, ten or twelve ideas.
But ideas are, are a good start.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, looking at the street department new employee ad, um, so, Mr. Baker is on the fence on whether he wants to talk a little more or, or not stay as, as the street department had. So I'm hesitant to run that ad, I'd like to speak with him one more time before we run that ad one more time.
Yeah, uh, and my comment was, I, um, ran into one of the street guys a couple weeks ago, and, uh, something I wasn't aware of, and something made for discussion, the phone. Their, the phone, that, it must be a cellphone, and it must be a Trail Creek cellphone, but at some point in time over life with that phone, uh, it's, the number's been published worldwide, so I'll just give you.
Publicly.
Publicly, and it shouldn't be.
No, it shouldn't.
But it is, and that's one of the deterrents, possibly, for people to want that job, because I thought it was originally set up to, you know, if they would have, they can carry the phone, of course, in emergency, emergency calls, which I think would call, come from Steve, maybe from one of us, right, maybe yourself or Josh Lane, but, uh, as far as the public, uh, calling them at different times of the day and something about silly things, I, you know, that doesn't seem right, so.
I agree, somebody, I don't know where they.
I think that number was handed out by one of the prior street department ads.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, maybe, I don't know.
So my, my thought is, even if, whatever happens, if we do get somebody or what happened, I would change the number.
And, and that can happen rather quickly.
Right.
Because that's not.
Yeah, that's a, that's a easy fix.
Do we still have the, do we still have the phone that was, uh, Mr. Switzer's at one time?
Steve still has that?
Yeah, so it's, I think, somewhere in there.
Okay.
But not the number, we don't have the number.
We don't have the number anymore, okay. That number can be changed pretty quickly, though.
Oh, yeah.
We can, we can call our cellphone provider and do that pretty quickly, um.
I have a question, does, does Dave not want his fourth employee? That's kinda why I, why.
Oh, that was the other one.
Yeah.
I thought they had.
It's either gonna be a street commissioner or another employee, right now they have three employees.
Let me speak to him tomorrow about that as well.
Okay.
Since I'm gonna talk to him about the Harding issue. So I'll follow up with him tomorrow about both. Okay. Moving on to the twenty twenty-four budgets adoption, now, before we move on to this, do we have to have all five of us here to adopt that? Is that gonna be an issue?
No.
Okay, because this isn't our first reading, so we'll make sure that with Sharon not being here, that's not gonna be an issue.
I'm gonna defer this to Trista, because I know you guys have talked to some things, talked about some things in the budget last month, so.
Do we have any more final numbers on the insurance issues?
No, I sent, I received all the applications back from the employees and sent it out on Tuesday morning.
And nothing back from?
Nothing back. No. I do know that First Source, um, our current carrier, as of yesterday, still had not received a renewal rate for next year.
Okay.
So that's part.
That was supposed to have it on the fifteen?
That was the soonest.
Right.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
So I think Trista and I talked about this, if you wanna.
So the two choices are pretty obvious, I think, um, pass the budget that you have, and hope that the insurance comes in lower. Right now we have one hundred thirty-nine thousand assigned for that line itself. If the insurance does come in lower, great, you've got semester, you can move somewhere else, if the insurance comes in higher, we'd have to look, uh, somewhere, either an additional appropriation or a transfer of some kind. The second option, of course, is to pause, uh, continue the actual second reading, not table up, but continue it to the date certain, which we had, uh, briefly discussed earlier, meaning two weeks ago, which would be on October thirtieth. Um, perfectly legal, legal to continue it, you simply would continue for further discussion, uh, the twenty twenty-four budget to the date, place, and time certain, and then there's no trouble. There's no additional advertisement that's required, because you're doing it right here in the open public meeting. And then you kinda cross your fingers and hope in those two weeks that you get some better information.
Can I ask a question regarding timing? So October thirtieth, is that your date that you're suggesting, because we have a bid opening that day?
Right, so we knew we had the bid opening that night as well, and what we thought is we would just do both that same night.
Have to advertise that, was my point, is we're gonna just change that.
I actually did advertise it, just like that.
I did, I would, I would feel more comfortable if we waited, just because I want to know the, the definite numbers.
I'm a hundred, that's what I was just gonna say.
There's a hundred percent agreement, we should continue this till the thirtieth of October, and hopefully the insurance numbers come. Better numbers.
Nope.
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense.
Do you need a motion for that?
I agree with you, that's my recommendation, but I wanted you to be able to.
Oh, one hundred percent, that, that makes sense to me.
I think it's the most responsible.
Right, I don't wanna cross my fingers and hope, I would like to have solid numbers.
Jump in blind faith like that, that's, that's a little scary, that's a big number to jump like that.
Very much.
So, okay, so if we can hold off on this and do that on, on the.
Do we need a, do we need a motion for that?
Motion to continue.
Okay, so I, my motion is that we continue until the thirtieth, when we have the solid numbers, especially for the insurance.
And a second?
I second that.
And you'd like to do it for further conversation on the budget?
And also for further conversation on the budgets.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go.
So that's the thirtieth here in town hall at what time?
At six thirty.
Six thirty.
Perfect.
So that, that evening we'll do the.
The bids are, the bid opening is one P M.
Oh, okay.
Has that already been advertised?
That's why.
Okay.
Okay.
Because it.
So the bid opening is one P M. I will be here at, at that time.
See what's going on that day, hold on, make sure I can be here for sure.
Um, but at six thirty, then we will do the budgets.
So then, that's gonna take a special meeting, so that is.
You could do the budget hearing at the one o'clock time.
Right, but I don't know that not everybody can make that, because I know that Kyle won't be able to do that.
So you'll have to advertise a special, there'll be two meetings that day.
Did you advertise the bid opening?
That's what, yes, that's what was in there.
Okay.
Now, can you be here at both, or no?
I should be able to.
So I, I know I can be at both.
What, for ten days?
Can you be here at both, or no?
Ten days.
If you decide to be.
To, for the meeting?
Yep.
To advertise it?
No, it's not even that, it's not even that.
So then we'll just have to advertise one at six thirty, and he's got the other one at one, so, okay, so we're already, we're covered then, okay. At six thirty in Ohio works for you for the budgets?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and I know it'll work for Sharon, so I'm not gonna worry so much about that. So that will, that will be fine. Okay.
Do y'all have a moment for, uh, just questions quickly?
Sure.
There are three funds, the A R P fund, the C C I, and major moves.
Okay.
And the same, um, kind of, I guess, process applies to all three.
Okay.
On June thirtieth, when we have to start, uh, with the balance numbers for the D L G F to then use as they see how our year will finish, we give them the cash balance, and so let's use A R P as the example. June thirtieth cash balance was four hundred thirty-two thousand, one hundred twenty. We then for the D L G F have to list for them what the rest of the twenty twenty-three budget expenditures are that are listed, so we have that number down, which at that time was still four hundred forty-one thousand, a little bit had been spent in between, um, the original budget and the, the June thirtieth cash balance. So if, the D L G F looks at it like this, if you were to spend the rest of the budget during these last couple months of twenty twenty-three, you would then have zero money left. So when we list then the budget for twenty twenty-four, which we've listed as the full four thirty-two, because you want to build a spot on the new building, they think that you're gonna go over four hundred thousand in the negative, because they're joining all those together. So we have two choices. We either do a reduction in the twenty-three budget by ordinance at your next meeting, and then we tell the D, the D L G F we're not gonna use it all, so hold it for us for next year. Or we submit it as it is, and then, um, you'd have cash left over for not using it, you do an additional appropriation next year. I would prefer to be able to tell them, we're reducing the twenty-three budget, because you're not gonna need it all.
I would prefer that.
And then, the budget can be listed in full for twenty twenty-four, and you have a good cash balance there showing.
How much would we reduce?
Just depends what you, uh, are not going to spend. So I don't know with the, the timing of the bids, if you think for the A R P specifically, you may start to spend a little bit of money at, in, say, December, in the initial parts of the project, or if no bills, and that might be a hard prediction.
I think that's gonna depend on what the bids come in at, and so we won't really be able to predict that until we see those bids on, on the thirty, thirtieth.
So for that fund, we can kinda make a game time decision Monday afternoon, and then, uh, repost the numbers. The major moves, uh, similar situation, Josh Lane said that thirty thousand of it in this year's budget, um, is being used to match the C C M G grant.
Yes.
And so instead of listing for twenty-four's budget at the current cash balance of fifty-nine thousand, I'll change that, we'll change that to show twenty-nine, which will be the rest of the cash.
Right.
And then they'll approve the budget. And then the last one is the C C I, um, again, similar situation, it's just really a matter of how much might be spent yet this year, um, to balance that out. You said you use it for phones and things?
We are gonna use more of the art, because that's what is being used right now to pay the police.
Right.
And actually, twenty twenty-four, it's gonna come out of lit, so there's then definitely gonna be one more, a little bit more that's gonna come out of the ARP fund for the police to be paid.
So can you project that amount that will come out?
Mm-hmm.
So if you could project that amount, and then we can, we can add that for, for the thirtieth as well.
Alright.
Yeah, that's, that should be, I think, it's coming out of there.
Right, get that figured to Trista, so you could have that for the thirtieth as well.
Okay, alright, so I'll get those adjustments ready for you for, uh, two weeks from now. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment for the evening. If you could, sort of state your name and address for the, for the record.
Tony Thomas, one oh eight Omeberg, at the Port. I want to bring to the council's attention of a year and a half battle that I've been having with J and B West over some shoddy construction work, and I've been working with Steve and with Josh Lane about it, and, uh, we got nowhere with them. They have put a lien on our house.
Which Steve, Steve?
No, I'm sorry, Steve, no, I'm, Steve Thomas.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, they put a lien on our house, and they have not, they have not finished the job yet, and they have not, uh, got a true inspection. They claim they have sent the information to Steve, Steve has no recollection, can't find any information. Josh Dana's confirmed that she has no recollection or no information from them. So, uh, I am asking the town's assistance to help the citizens, uh, fight this battle. I'm sorry, I only have some copies of, this is a very, very small outline of what I have kept track, I have a portfolio of emails, photographs, and text messages of my consistent, uh, attempt to get them to look at me. I am not saying I don't owe them money, they did a job, however, I've asked for a discount, and they will not do that. I, I've talked to Steve tonight, and he and I are gonna try to meet with them, but we both agree that since they did not, uh, get the full inspection, they have broken the Trail Creek permit, which would be what I would consider against the code, the building code, so I asked that the council do what they can to assist with this. As you'll notice, um, I found, well, I didn't put it on here, but I have found thirteen problems. One day, they did the roof, and I don't know if they did it correctly, but when they were doing this. but when they were doing the siding, I went out a day when it rained and they had to stop. And they had not put on any wrap around the house. They had not done a lot of the work that I know is just basic construction. And when I contacted them, they came back, ripped off everything, redid it. And that was when I realized I have to be in charge of this. So I spent over 50 hours supervising their work, finding 13 mistakes that they had to come back and fix, not to mention garbage in my attic that they had put in there while redoing their roofing. And my major concern with this is that if I had to find all this stuff from them, how many other people have had this issue that they didn't know about? I don't know what's underneath my siding. I don't know what's underneath our roof because they didn't have the inspection. And I am just going to be forever wondering, did they do it correctly? My biggest questions are, according to Steve, all they have to do is send photos to him. He looks at them and says that it's acceptable. I don't know if that's the protocol. I'm trusting that Steve knows what he's doing with that. But I would think a personal inspection would be the best way to do that. I know he's extra busy. There's no question, I mean, he's doing a great job. But I'm concerned about that. I asked J&amp;B West to send me the photos because they keep sending. They swear they sent them to Steve. They swear they sent them to Josh Lean. And I said, well, send me the photos, I want to see them. And they have not sent them yet.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have, can we get involved as council?
Well, I would say certainly not tonight. I would, while I don't want to question the residents' representations here, don't have any information, then probably need to talk to your building inspector first. There are avenues to address contractors and revocation of registration. But the rest of it is unfortunately, and it's always the worst response you can give a resident, some of this is civil and under your contractual. And again, being careful not to give you legal advice. But I would suggest that we at least talk to Steve and get some information from him and then determine if there's anything that the town should do to look at the registration and revoking that because there is a procedure for that and to see if there's any violations here with regard to things that they should do. But I think we need to look internally first.
Did you, just a quick question. Did, usually a contractor will, whatever they're writing, contract, a contract to you, to the homeowner, or did he, did you have that?
Yes.
Something in black and white that they said that they're going to do? Is it pretty detail or just?
It's, I consider it detail, but others, her black guy, it's just a regular contract to move inside your house.
Okay, so we need to get ahold of Steve.
Yes. What was the total cost of the project?
$23,000 and I paid $9,000 of them. And I told them that after a year, I said, I would be happy to pay you $18,000. And they said, no. I said, all right, I still, I have no problem. You did the work. I don't know if it's done correctly. I don't know this, but I'll pay the $19,000. I think that's fair, about a 20% discount for all that I've had to do, that my supervision, 13 times you had to come back to fix things. I think 20% is pretty fair. And they said, no. And then they put the lien on the house. And we're coming up to the year for the year of lien until in January. And I just don't think that's right. I don't think we should be treated that way as a customer. And then again, they never did the inspection. In the, in the permit that Josh Lean sent, they requested two permits. And I'm not sure for what were the two. I know the one would be the roof, but I'm not sure what the second inspection would be. But if they haven't done the one, I'm pretty sure they haven't done the second because they paid $110 each inspection is 55.
The permit is the difference there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, permit fee is the difference.
Because that was under the inspection.
And the inspection is 55, yeah.
But either way, they didn't do the inspection. And to me, that's breaking something, code. And that would be, I would put that under the Trail Creek per view, town's per view.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We will look into it.
Thank you very much.
And we'll follow up and we'll get back to you. Any other public comment this evening? No? Any clerks comment this evening?
No.
Any council comments this evening?
I have, maybe some positive questions, but I can knock off the remodeling meeting. Got that answer. If we had, hypothetical, well, we get to a point that we say we're going to demo those two buildings, do we have that money somewhere? Then say if it's $10,000 each, do we, I mean, we could talk a lot, but if we don't have the money, it's like...
You're going to do it next year.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah, and then...
Just proceduralizing.
If we decide to do the grant next year.
Because something's going to happen next year with it.
Yeah.
I hate to have it just sit there again for another, I don't know. I'm just asking, you know, how do you, or how do you get the money?
We could creatively try to find something and get back with you guys. It's just, we're really, obviously, that's why Trista's here, is because we've been running tight.
Okay.
So I think we're going to have to start making some hard decisions, you know, or have a plan in place like Trista has started for you. Like this year, we're going to do that, you know, the next year we'll do that.
Can that be?
Because it's really getting to the point where we have to make decisions.
Yeah, I got it. Can, or us, or you, or all of us, put that on the list, put it on a reader?
So I think that's what Trista was doing, helping us formulate that plan, is that at least one of the two properties can go in that plan.
One of the two, okay. Yeah, fine.
Along with the multitude of other things we need to do, like codifying our ordinances and lots of other things.
And then my other question is, is there any issues or regulations or rules or whatever regarding the election signs that are in Town and Trail Creek that don't reflect anything about the town? Because it's all about city.
So there are rules about them being in the right of way. So they have to be a certain distance off the road so that they don't affect the sightlines for people who are driving or backing out of driveways, that kind of thing.
The city can put their signs.
The city or the county, as far as I know, there's not...
It's protected. I'll send you a pamphlet. It's one of those things that's pretty difficult to limit other than for safety in those states.
Can we go the other way around? Can we put Trail Creek out in the city?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't matter.
I have one in a city residence yard.
I was wondering, it's like, I didn't understand. Do they, in my mind, it's like, do they not know that they're not in Michigan City?
There are also people from Michigan City who happen in the county as well.
It's high visibility areas, obviously.
That's what they see it as.
I always had Rodney Stein as my mayor for mayor.
Yeah. Any other council comments this evening? So I do, I do have a few things. First of all, I want to go backwards just a little bit. We do have a note here from Patrick Krierler, who wanted to thank the Town of Trail Creek council members and Josh Lean and the police department for their continued support of their 5K that they do every year. So thank you from, from the St. Stan's 5K committee. Also, I had a question, Josh Lean, on the software that we purchased for the permitting.
Yes.
Where, that was an expensive piece of software. Where are we with that? That was $20,000.
We're almost complete, but I have not had, honestly, with everything that the Town Hall has tasked to do, I just haven't had the time to catch back with it.
How long ago did we purchase that?
August or July.
Okay, because I know the support clock on that is ticking and...
Uh, no, it's, it's, it's at a standstill right now. They're not going to keep charging us. We've already paid.
Right, but what I'm saying is we're losing time on the support that we have for that.
We're losing time on enjoying the software, exactly.
So that's, I'm worried about that because that was a lot of money that we paid with.
I understand, I understand. I'm doing everything I can.
Okay.
I'm sticking with the things that are daily operations and that alone keeps me busy enough.
Understood.
I hope to find some time.
Okay.
But I can only do so much.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Can I jump in? I'm not, I know I'm behind the times on it. Does that sound like, I think that's been going on for a bit or a little bit? What would you need, if you need help, what would you need?
Time to take you on the phone with him and talk about the last few pieces that need to go into place.
Oh, okay.
So time.
Yeah.
Or third employee.
So you would be the person, obviously, to contact the software guy?
Hey, I'm busy all day long. I mean, there's, I don't have to tell you guys.
No, I know.
You can imagine.
I just didn't know what was needed, you know?
Time to sit on the phone, to build the portal, to complete building the portal.
Yeah. Do you have to, you...
Yes.
Create that or does he create?
We go through it together as far as what the town's needs are. And where we're at right now is code enforcement.
Okay.
How long does that initial investment that we paid, how long does that take us to with the contract for that software?
I'm sorry?
So I know we paid $20,000 initially and that should have taken us up to like a certain point before it was...
It's per year. And then when the contract is complete, then it's the $12,000 a year. When, I'm sorry, when the portal is completed.
Okay.
Now, we did receive another $12,000 bill, but obviously, we don't owe it because we haven't completed it. So they pulled that back until he and I can find time. He has, he has his busy schedule and I have my busy schedule. So we're both trying to find time to connect, to finish that last piece of the portal.
So that's when the year would start?
Yes.
When the portal's completed?
That's correct.
Do you, again, I'm just asking, do you have a timeframe with this gentleman to have it done?
I don't because I don't. I mean, everything that is asked of the clerk's office, and I know not one of you understand that, but the clerk's office is very busy all day. I mean, I can go from being on the phone, talking about software issues, to taking a customer complaint or doing a police report.
Yeah.
It's, it's very busy. You know, now we're gearing up for, now we're busy with the budgets, you know? Then we're going to be busy with gearing up for billing.
Yeah.
This is why I came to the council last year and said, please don't freeze the budget for my third employee because the clerk's office really does need another body who can handle filing and creation of files or answering the phones or doing receipts rather than myself having to stop what I'm doing and answer phones and stuff like that. I would rather be doing the clerk treasurer job, which would be having this program put in place or for thinking about other things that the clerk's office may need or streamlining processes so that we're more efficient. But my time is spent on the phone taking concerns. My time is spent doing receipts. My time is spent doing the building department stuff or the police department reports.
Yeah.
So I only, there's only so much time in the day.
Right, do you have, do you, between, who's the gentleman I'm just talking about? The IT guy?
Um...
What's his first name? Jim?
Our IT guy?
What were you talking about?
The software gentleman.
He's the software guy. There's three guys.
This is a company that we've purchased.
Blueprint.
It's Blueprint. Harris.
Because I was asking to have, is there, is there some kind of a plan between you two, you and them? Say, hey, we need to get this done by the end of the year? We need to get it done by the end of the year?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we just spoke briefly on an email and we're trying to catch up, you know?
I guess while I understand that your office hours are six hours a day, five days a week, this was a very expensive piece of software for our...
I understand. What do you want me to do?
Implement it.
If it was...
I know.
If it was not just the public sector, if it was a private sector, regardless if it's a public sector or private, I think the, probably the residents of Trail Creek expect that $20,000 was spent more responsibly and that this piece of software was implemented. And I understand that the office hours are only eight to two and that your office is quite busy, but that this $20,000 was, was spent and this piece of software needs to be put into place.
And I would think that the residents would like to know why the clerk's office is not getting a third employee.
Well, probably because in 2013, when this office was made full time, you were, you told the council at that time that you didn't need that third employee if you were going full time.
We're not in 2013 anymore. We're in 2023.
Then that needs to be justified. We can do a time study on how many hours are spent.
Would you guys like to come in and spend a week with us? I've offered that.
Well, if I didn't work full time, I would do that.
If you didn't work full time.
Outside of this, if I didn't work 40 hours a week, I would do that.
You know, years ago, I used to put, come in on my days off and holidays and weekends. And I decided that because I'm only getting 2% raises, that I'm going to give you what I'm worth. I can't be here on holidays. I can't be here on my days off.
I'm going to call this meeting.
And I shouldn't have to.
Well, I just want to, I want to address that though because honestly, a 2% raise, you're not serving the council. You're serving the people of Trail Creek.
That's all I ever think about is the Town of Trail Creek, the citizens. My phone rings all day long and I speak with the citizens.
If we're going to discuss personnel matters, those can be discussed outside of this meeting.
Absolutely.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, I have one question. How much time do you think, Josh Lean, it would take you and that gentleman on the telephone to get the portal completed and get the system up and running? How will I just ballpark?
I don't know. I can tell you, as I said, that we're in the ending stages. And I can also tell you that this is not something that I'm just dismissing. I take this seriously. I fought for the software last year. I fought very hard.
That's why we approved the $20,000 despite.
So I wouldn't be just dismissing $20,000. That's, that's important money.